Good evening. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by one of our own scout groups? And if I mess this up, don't be mad at me, but it's 76293. They're going to lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's help them out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's hear it for them. Nice job, girls. All right, just as in some fashion, we're going to start this meeting off by the same troop that did a very awesome project, and they're going to share it for us right from the podium. Girls, you take it away. If you've got questions, if we have technical difficulties, I will sing and dance while things are doing. So if, without further ado, the floor is yours.
We're Girl Scout troop 76293, and we're here to talk about our Silver Award project on recycling in Livonia.
The goal of our Silver Award project is to spread awareness about proper recycling in Livonia. We also want to give people proper, people alternate locations to recycle difficult materials and prevent those unrecyclable goods from contaminating batches. We hope to help Livonia reach its recycle goal of 30% recycling rate by 2029.
The Silver Award is the second highest award you can earn in Girl Scouts, first being the Bronze Award and third being the Gold Award. These are all projects that are meant to make a lasting difference in the community, and we chose to do our project on improving recycling knowledge in Livonia.
So what are the mistakes that people tend to make when deciding what to recycle? We have learned during our project that many things are recycled that shouldn't be put on the curb. Some of these are greasy pizza boxes, styrofoam, plastic bags, Pilwattos, and wax cardboard gardens.
Some of the ways we've already spread the word are, we appeared on the Livonia On-Ear Podcast, and we talked about our project and some common recycling mistakes and more about how to recycle properly. And we also made a recycling video about what can and can't be put on the curb that was shared on Facebook. Two other things we've done that haven't yet been shared are, we appeared on the podcast again, and we talked about this new app, Recycle Coach, which we'll talk about more later. And we also made a website about alternate locations that you can take goods that can't be put on the curb.
In the beginning of the project, we reached out to the Greenleaf Commission and asked them to be responsible for this project. This means that they have given us guidance on what to do within our project. They've given us opportunities to spread the word, such as putting out videos on the Livonia Community Facebook page and putting out podcasts on the Livonia On-Ear Podcast. A special thank you to Commissioner Browninghouse, who has been our primary advisor through this project. We are also the people in Livonia who get to spread the word about the new app, Recycle Coach.
Recycle Coach is a newly launched app for Livonia that helps people learn how to recycle properly. When you first download it, you put in your address, and that enables you to get pickup reminders that are specific to your area, which means you can also report if they miss a pickup or if you have a damaged cart. A really helpful feature is that you can scan or search up items, and it will tell you if they're recyclable on the curb, and if not, where else you can take them. And then there are just a lot of other ways to learn more, like you can take quizzes, and you can learn if what you think you know is actually true. You can read blogs, watch videos, and for younger people, there are games and packets you can print out.
The city of Livonia is currently testing the Recycle Coach app. This is part of an ongoing effort to enhance community recycling programs. Here's the QR code to download the Recycle Coach app. Feel free to scan in your camera app and download to start enjoying the app today.
That is the presentation, right? Listen, guys, let's hear it for the girls. I got to tell you, that was awesome, honestly, especially right now. We have an audience, and I, the minute you guys put the QR code, I think a lot of people in this room were looking, and they were going online. Great job, honestly, this council. I'll open up the council. If you've guys got questions, I know Councilman Toy is still trying to figure out how to use that phone for the QR. But...
It's okay. I was a Girl Scout. I know.
She's a Bentley Bulldog. That's fine. But no, honestly, well done on this, girls. This is phenomenal, and thank you for the contribution, this contributing to the city for the recycling. It's really important. We have a subcommittee that we were trying to figure out how we could educate the community on fun ways. Something like that is great. Just like you said, you could find some things that are fake news on there as well. So good job. Counsel, if you want to, Councilwoman Bzinski, feel free.
Yeah, I just want to say, great job. I know you guys also attended my Recycling 101 and helped me with it, actually, at the one at the senior center where we had a full room. So I think it's really great to have active young people in our community and keep up the good work.
Yes. Floor is yours.
If I may, thank you for all you're doing. We tried to start a recycling program back in 1969, probably before you were born. And we were told it was a passing fad. And so, you know, I'm glad to know that we're in the year 2000. What are, where are we at, 25? And you're doing things like this because it's so important, because so many people, the contamination is a big problem that we do have. So you're really helping eliminate that for us. Can I ask you a question? You know, when you get a pizza, usually they have, and I know none of you eat pizza, but, you know, that little plate or a piece of paper on the bottom of the box? If people take that out, can they still recycle that cardboard? Do you know? Or maybe not? I don't know.
As long as there's no grease.
Grease on it? Okay. So no pepperoni or anything? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Anything else, counsel?
Thank you.
Let's give them one last round of applause. All right, thanks, girls. All right, we're going to keep the special recognitions and tributes going. I'm going to hand it off to Vice President Martha Taschek. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we're going to be honoring Christopher Bolovan. So if he wants to step up, we'll give him a second to come on down. Chris is our, coming off the Zoning Board of Appeals, and he has just been an exemplary member, and we wanted to take tonight to thank him for his service. So as an attorney, who was very strong with regard to land use, Chris brought really invaluable expertise and insight to the ZBA. He was initially appointed to the ZBA by former Councilman Brandon Kurtzman and was reappointed by former Council President Kathleen McIntyre. I was fortunate to serve alongside Chris on the Zoning Board of Appeals for a few years, and I considered him a mentor during that time, and I really appreciated that. He helped shape my understanding of land use and zoning matters, and I considered his expertise to be invaluable on some of our really complex decisions that we had to make. He's always demonstrated a deep commitment to our community, a genuine passion for Livonia, and was always someone that was willing to collaborate and make sure we, you know, had fairness in our processes. His ability to navigate challenging issues with grace and integrity has left a lasting impression not only on me, but anyone who has served with him. And I know that the other members of the ZBA feel the same. So Chris is a standard of excellence, and that's why we wanted to honor him tonight. And anyone that is going to be serving Livonia or has served Livonia would strive to uphold those standards. So thank you again, Chris. We appreciate your outstanding service. Thank you for mentoring me when I was on the ZBA and for being an example of service to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's her point. Do you want to get a group picture?
Sent this to you, yes.
All right. All right, what do we got? With that, we're going to jump right into the meeting. Everybody, welcome to the 2021st regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting to be scheduled to be held on Monday, August 11th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
Vice President Taschek?
Here.
Councilmember Bzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show all members of council present. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council held on July 7th, 2025. Counsel?
Support.
I've got motion maker Toy, support by Councilwoman Scheel. Do we have any comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Taschek?
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry, seven to zero. Jumping right into audience communication. This is audience communication. We've set aside 30 minutes for items that are not presently on the agenda. If you would like to speak, make your way to either podium. Name, address, and you've got three minutes. Take it from there.
Can my mother stand with me?
Yes. Yes. But yeah, just name, address, and then you've got your three minutes.
My name is Jillian Cram. I live at 9811 Seltzer. I've been there since 2009, but I have been a lifelong resident. This is my mother, Amy Kirksey, who lives at 32731 Meadowbrook. While I don't personally bear the Kirksey name, my grandfather is Jack Kirksey. He's Livonia's longest-serving mayor. My mother and I have served the city campaigning and other various things since our childhood. Even my son was able to attend the last State of the City of my grandfather's in 2015. My grandmother passed during the lockdown. Both Mayor Bennett and his wife Janet are also deceased. Our families have both spent decades serving this city, and we're, I'm here because the proposed price tag of this bill to erase our city, it just truly disturbs me. I do hope that if the Bennett Library is demolished, that they're reimbursed for the costs that they were, and that they incurred to have that honor for less than 10 years. My grandfather gave generously to have his name on the rec center, and if that honor were taken away from him, I know he could use those funds as he is still alive and possibly immortal. Just to illustrate what my mom's holding here, I just have some pictures of the exterior corners of our city. Let's see. This is northeast Livonia. We've got two boarded up facilities. The only one that is open is a pawn shop. This is Joy and Angster. Last time I believe this facility was opened was when I was still in ballet in 2009. And this is the corner where I enter my subdivision, Dobby's Toxito, been vacant well before COVID, and just, as you can tell, it attracts people. And this is less than two blocks of Plymouth Road, Chins, Burger King, Chase Bank, Crestview Bar, just a few of the eyesores that I have to look at. The city doesn't need to demolish buildings in order to have another facility. There's an empty courthouse. Soon, there's going to be an empty senior center, and as I understand it, Noble Library has been shut down. The power was turned off. Water has been infiltrated, infiltrated the facility, and now it harbors mold. Fire stations are spread throughout our city. That is so that they can respond more quickly to emergencies. I don't understand why we can't apply that rationale if we're actually considering building a new police station.
That's a three-minute time. If you would like to...
Really?
So no, we do have the three-minute council update. If you want to wait for the study, you could, your time, you can do so that if you, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Genevieve Lenore. I live at 9063 Beatrice Street. Our community, as our community descended into division earlier this year, I watched people show up to these council meetings to say the same things that I was feeling. And I watched them be condescended to and dismissed with a finger pointed directly at the Livonia Vision 21. When the conversation reached the public square, I watched the people brave enough to speak my feelings be demeaned for their generation and their political affiliations, accused of ignorantly obstructing all progress, again, with the finger pointed directly at the Livonia Vision 21. So I decided to look into the Livonia Vision 21 and the process that created it. What I found was the process that began with a steering committee rich in business interests. Committee members involved in commercial real estate or local business owners likely to benefit directly from the plan that was being established. The rest either stood to receive increased campaign donations or professional opportunity. According to the official Vision 21 document, the key public outreach was the website livoniovision21.com. It also specifies a total of only 1,740 responses to nine different surveys there. It's a meaningful, the meaningful engagement rate on that is less than 2%. No wonder residents feel blindsided by the goals of the Livonia Vision 21. About 90,000 of us were left out of the loop. Livonia needs its own identity. It's time to end the cycle of trying to keep up with the Joneses decades after the Joneses upgraded. We don't want the same high-density developer dream that people in Novi are fighting on the Grand River Corridor, and we don't want a cheap copy of Cherry Hill Village. We want real innovation. We want to see our real history honored and a future that blends the old Motor City American dream that built this city with the new sustainable one that we are working to build right now. People in favor of the current Vision 21 project, including the bulk of you in leadership, want the opposition to be old. You want them to be partisan. You want them to be uneducated and too emotional to be taken seriously. But they are our artists, environmentalists, and our historians. They are our parents and our children. They are our bold and our faithful. They are the working class, and most importantly, they are our neighbors. They are the literal heart of this city. Because of all of this, I personally will fight every single proposal that reflects the priorities of the Livonia Vision 21 until it is updated to reflect the one thing that matters the most in any community: the people.
We got to, we got to stay. Thank you. Everybody just, listen, as we know, we've got to stick to the three minutes. It's just, it's part of the meeting. I'm going to try to police this as much, so just be respectful. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Deb Christensen, Livonia resident. I'd like to read something that was published on Thursday, July 17th, 2025, in the Detroit News. On August 5th, Reject Sneaky Tax Hike Proposals. Ballot proposals that ask for tax hikes should be presented to voters in elections with the highest anticipated participation. That would not be the August 5th primary, when only, when roughly only 20% of the electorate in the handful of communities with elections are likely to vote. Our position historically has been to oppose tax levies when they are stuck on the ballot in likely low turnout elections. We stick to that position this year. This was the editorial, by the way. I'm sorry I didn't mention that. We stick to that position this year in advising voters to reject the tax hikes requested by several local municipalities. At least three communities, Livonia, Romulus, and Novi, are asking for revenue increases that in excess of $100 million. There may be some merit in some of these initiatives, but they should have gone to the voters in an election when a much higher voter turnout was expected. The November election, the November general election would have been preferable to a, to a summer primary when fewer people are around to cast ballots or are even aware that an election is being held. It's a sneaky tactic employed by officials in an effort to assure their desired outcome. With that in mind, we are recommending voters say no to the various tax requests they'll face on August 5th. In Livonia, as we know, the Wayne County suburb is seeking to borrow $150 million to be repaid over 25 years. The average annual tax bill will rise $144. The money will go to renovate five fire stations and build a new library and a police station and a city hall. We know that Sidney Hall is not included. The structures to be replaced are in need of upgrading, but they are not in such poor shape that they need to be torn down. The city should come back with a more realistic proposal that focuses on modernization of existing facilities, and it should do so in the 2026 general election when voter turnout should be at its maximum. I'm not going to read Romulus and Novi, but at the end of this editorial, as with the other two proposals, this is too big of an ask to be relegated to an August election with minimal turnout. It should be moved to a general election where a larger portion of the electorate can determine whether improving the city's police and fire stations is worth the extra tax dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Chris Lenore, Beatrice Street. I'm not afraid to spend money on forward-thinking ideas and projects. As a union member, we typically embrace municipal projects. They have potential to provide good-paying jobs for tradesmen within our community. At the start of the year, I regularly started watching or coming to council meetings. Then on March 12th, I actually received a communication from my business rep about a potential downtown project that could benefit the tradesmen. The mayor came. She spoke on Vision 21. She discussed the different phases and how we were now entering the third phase. Phase one was the senior center. Phase two was the city hall and redevelopment with a bond that was already taken care of and didn't require taxpayer money. Phase three, which we're now in, would address the public safety, the buildings, relocation, and upgrades. The Bennett Library may have been part of that discussion. I don't recall because it's kind of changed messaging a few times. Phase four is the downtown portion of this vision. The landscape will be created by commercial developers. I'm going to throw a little bit of shade and say that developers may have relationships with the steering committee that created the Vision 21. Anyway, the public will get little to no say on the large development. That will be left to council committees and boards. I left that presentation disappointed. My wife, business rep, and I all thought the project lacked any innovation. My business rep even said it was a missed opportunity for solar and geothermal integration. I know I'd like Vision that has this with a net-zero carbon footprint, or at least close to it. In my opinion, all this proposal did was highlight how Livonia has neglected its assets and would like citizens to feel guilty if we don't pass a millage that helps the police and fire. Then, we have council's talking point of the $12 a month. The Livonia bill calculation puts my house at $200 a year. Nobody thinks about this on a monthly note. According to state law, Livonia can increase our taxable value by up to 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. I calculated our household at a conservative 1.5%. In 15 years, this millage, along with summer taxes, can increase my summer taxes by $1,021.55. And that's at current millage rates and not including a regional transit millage that I will support. Have you thought about fixed incomes? The people are watching. We're researching. When are you guys going to listen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, audience, and those people watching at home. As many of you know, my name is Cindy Fleming, and I live in Livonia here, and I come before you tonight to speak as a representative of the nonprofit Save Alfred Noble. As you all know by now, Save Alfred Noble and a large group of citizens from Livonia and as far away as New Hampshire have been working and advocating to save the iconic mid-century modern built library, former library building on Plymouth Road that was designed by award-winning architect Gunnar Berghards. We're trying to save it from the wrecking ball. Although several years have passed since Mayor Brosnan put a pause on the demolition of the building, her administration has failed to protect the building from further damage. It has not been maintained in any way. The building went from an operating library in October of 2019, when it was closed, due to a leaky basement that was not properly addressed by the city, to a building found recently by an independent structural engineering firm to have a leaking roof, clogged roof drains, missing unclogged gutters and splash guards, improperly maintained grade, cracks in the walls, and a basement that continually fills with water, a severely neglected landscape and parking lot. I've recently come to find out by attending committee meetings that the city recently sued a Plymouth Road, excuse me, Plymouth Road business for building issues that I just described. So they sued another business for what they allowed to happen to their own building. This seems to be a clear double standard, one that could potentially open up the city to potential litigation. What kind of message is this sending Livonia's citizens and business owners? We at Save Alfred Noble were originally pleased to see that the mayor had sent council in early February of this year a letter saying that she intended to stabilize the, quote, "Stabilize the exterior, provide some kind of interior ventilation, secure the building from vandals, break-ins and natural disasters, and provide regular surveillance and monitoring." The mayor's letter went on to say that it was time to, quote, "advance community-led strategic planning to determine the future use of the Noble site," end quote. As you all know by now from the repeated large groups of citizens who have come before you to fight this fight for the noble cause, the nonprofit Save Alfred Noble has already engaged...
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. First, it's great the monitors are working tonight. They haven't been working for like three meetings. All right, I'm wearing my button today. I am a Livonia taxpayer. This button was created by Ed McNamara. For the kids at home, Ed was, he was our mayor from 1970 to 1986, and he created this on a proposal that I won't get into the weeds on, but he really cared about taxpayer and their, how their money was spent. So I'm here to ask the questions. Are outsiders making decisions for Livonia? Some of the most high-profile voices supporting this millage don't even live in Livonia. Think about that. The fire chief and nearly every city department director, none of them live here. They don't pay Livonia taxes. They don't send their kids to our schools. They don't use our library, yet they want to raise our taxes while theirs remain untouched. What if we walked into their city and said, "We're going to tear down your library, but don't worry, we'll put up something new in a few years"? They'd be outraged. They'd be completely outraged, and rightfully so. Livonia residents deserve better. The use of Livonia tax dollars should reflect our decisions, not those of people who punch a clock and leave at 5:00 PM. When outsiders who don't live under the weight of the taxes they propose start proposing what's best for us, we lose local control, and that should concern every homeowner, every senior citizen, and every young family trying to make ends meet. I am presenting an alternative proposal Tuesday, July 22nd, to this sneaky tax increase on the August ballot. I will be at the Civic Center Library tomorrow at 7:00 PM. I will be at the Civic Center Library tomorrow at 7:00 PM. My plan accomplishes all of the objectives without a millage, using the $45 million earmark for a new city hall. I'll have more than three minutes to push back against all the presentations I've soldiered through, and I've soldiered through a lot of them. I was at Maureen's this morning at Silver Village. It's, I'm going to put up the built slides and I'm going to point out all the misdirection, and I will show you my renderings of the new police department, the new fire department, the new city hall, all without a millage. I'm calling it a teach-in, come on, you might learn something. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everybody in the audience and the people at home. My name is Jim Bigga, I live on Lancashire here in Livonia. I'm here to discuss the excess that has been spent on the marketing, the Livonia built bond proposal by the city of Livonia. Do you even know what the administration has spent on the trinkets, flyers, posters, yard signs, retractable banners, and so on? Here's a breakdown so far of what we've been able to find out in FOIA requests to the city. 3,000 business cards, 2,000 bookmarks, 3,050 flyers, 15 foam boards, 14 coral plaster signs, whatever those are, 13 vinyl banners 30 by 60, 80 yard signs, 14 13 by 80 retractable banners. Now, I've gone to a lot of trade shows in my time. I haven't seen one company have that many banners, retractable banners at a show, and I've seen billion-dollar companies. This is ridiculous. 50 stickers? What did we have 50 stickers for? 2,500 bandanas in various colors? Best of all, a contract with a media strategy company in the amount of $19,500 to help with the selling of Livonia built concept at the state of the city for the mayor? Really? She can't have the city staff do this? All total, the city administration has spent, write this down, $33,690.66 of our taxpayer money, not her money, our money. None of you have been able to approve it because it's all been under the $25,000 limit. This is ridiculous. Why is it beneficial to us as residents? We don't see any benefit in it. That money could have been spent on something better used in the city. I mean, the president offered a motion to spend $30,000, but no, it went to $33,000 in trinkets. Give me a break. You know, as everybody's known, I've been opposed to this whole concept with the whole bond thing, but this thing is ridiculous. Now, we've got consultants hired to write speeches and provide data and do whatever else and all the other consultants that have been hired on, and what is it, the rush to ram down to our throats to take what's going on? You guys need to take a second look at this whole thing. This thing is just ridiculous, and these are only the costs that we've been able to get in a FOIA request that's been supplied to us. I don't know what else is out there that hasn't been supplied because we might not ask the proper terms that they're looking for. So hopefully you, as city council, might want to ask what's going on, or better yet, maybe we need to hire an independent auditor general for the city to look at costs and isn't accountable to the mayor or you, and just is appointed for a seven-year term and whatever they say comes out.
That's it. Thank you.
Christopher Martin, resident of the great state of Michigan. One thing that I'm against is the, and I would encourage people to vote against it, is this, in this millage increase. I think it's a poorly planned thing. I think it's just something that, it's just, it has evolved and gone in different directions, and I think this is really a scatterbrained idea, in my opinion, on that. One other thing on council candidates, okay, be very careful who you vote for, and I'm going to say this again, repeated it last, the last meeting. There was a time when you could speak for six minutes, now it's down to three, okay? And that was because of me using audience communication at this very podium a number of years ago. That's actually what took place. So also being shouted down if somebody didn't like what I was saying, okay? And it was job-related. I don't care what any of you do outside of work, I don't care. And I did that at General Motors, leader of skilled trades, representative of the UAW. I didn't care what anybody did outside of work. I was only concerned in what you do when you're here. That's it. Free speech, we have Jim Jolly to thank for that. When he was council president, he indeed brought that back, and now we can actually be critical of some of these elected officials, and that's a good thing. And you have continued with it, Brandon. Now, be very careful, the next council president that you put up there might take an about-face on free speech, and that's something to be concerned about and something to actually think about. So I would encourage people, once again, to vote no on this millage, and we'll wait for Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Loftus, and Brandon, I'm going to direct my comments at you. A year ago, just over a year ago, you met at our house on 33545 Curtis, and you talked about the deer issue and what was being done. Well, I'm here a year later to tell you, nothing's been done. Nothing at all. All right? Talk, 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 but nothing gets done. All right? We got the same amount of deer or more, and they're just ravaging our yards, and we try to keep our yard up. You saw it last year. All right? And it's just, everything's being ruined, and to take the time and energy to chase them off our property is just getting to be ridiculous. Now, there's a proposal on the ballot for, to raise our taxes, and I can't, I can't really get behind it because this city, this council, this mayor have done nothing about the deer issue. So if you're going to just, okay, yeah, it's a deer issue, so what? We've got more important things to worry about. No, that's not the way it works. All right? And you have my email address, so I'd like to see what's going on with the deer problem in Livonia, and it's not only Livonia, it's everywhere else. I just read an article, a farmer in Hillsdale, 200 acres, there's 200 deer on his property, and they're eating all his crops. So now it's affecting Michigan's second most valuable commodity, agriculture. So I don't know what the city council is doing, other than looking at your phone over there. Yeah.
Wait, sir, direct comment to me.
I know, but I saw him reading his phone, which is very-
I know, it's fine. This is your time.
Yeah.
I have a response for you, but I want, this is your time. It's funny, this is the meeting that, coming up from the reports from the mayor and other city officials will have this.
Okay.
So I will-
I expect an email soon.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm Justin Zidell from Southeastern Livonia. So I went to Kerry Bunzinski's Coffee Hour on July 12th and kind of get some ideas about the millage. So what I don't understand really, because like, the guys' biggest part is what, the police station, the fire station, the library. I kind of don't understand why you guys can't like, you know, add on extensions to it, you know, re-innovate, restructure the current buildings, and you know, instead of like tearing down this whole area. Because, I mean, this project's going to take multiple years to complete, and the construction's going to be asinine, so. So what I'm saying is, you know, if this millage, you know, doesn't pass, you know, try to think of like this as an alternative option, and you know, and be, you know, less money for it too. Now, I'm not familiar with the meeting, so I don't really have much else to say, but just, you know, keep that, you know, in thought.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
Hi there. Laura Janica, Mungar Street in Livonia. I came with just some creative ideas. I'm going to be light on you today, it's been kind of heavy so far, so bear with me. You know, we have some cool stuff here in Livonia, we really do, and we have this building, and I think this is an absolutely beautiful building. It's hard to see. This is, this is Sandberg Library. It's beautiful, and if you really look past the overgrown bushes, which can be removed for free, I got some people, we can do that, it's not a problem, and we could clean that up, we could get some little lawn chairs, some tables, and that would be adorable to sit out there. Got to get rid of all that stuff there. I showed this picture to my husband, and I said, "Do you know what that is? We live a mile from here." And he said, "It looks like an abandoned building." That's Sandberg Library. So again, the noble warriors have proven that we do good work, and we could take out all that stuff, clean that all up, put in a little rain garden there, put some stuff on the patio. That would cost like next to no money, and this could be a beautiful, beautiful building. We already own it. It has a new roof, has some copper on it, I believe, in the roof, in this brand-new roof. The garbage cans, I'm not sure who's in charge of garbage cans, but they're ugly. They're just really, really ugly, and the sign here, just simple stuff, and I think it could be really a million bucks. Put a little art on the inside too. So that's my tip for today.
Thank you. Okay, so I've got, right now we have hit our 30 minute, well, we have one left, so-
I'll let Francis go.
And then we'll go back to the audience at the end.
No, Francis, you go. You're fine. Look at that. Francis Janis, Livonia. I am not speaking about the millage. I am speaking about an event that happened on last Thursday during the Good Trouble Event. I was walking with a friend and was shocked to see a fire truck that had a Confederate flag with the people shouting out racially tinged remarks. A lot of us were very surprised and shocked, even though obviously this happens in the world nowadays, but we weren't able to get photos at the first pass that they were on. We did get photos of the second time they came around, and we're also, video, we have video, we have plates, we have photos of the people and whatnot. I am willing to share the photos that I have to council, mayor, or anyone in the police department because the person that is saying he is being blamed, his company is being blamed for this event, has said he will sue anybody and everybody because of what has happened. It is on their website. I'm not saying that that company is responsible. However, I do think it goes to the heart of where we need to sit there and be aware of who Livonia and any other city is doing business with. Because if indeed we find out through searching on this plate, on this vehicle, that it is a company that we are currently, along with Detroit, potentially Redford Township, that we are doing business with, that's going to reflect back on us. At this point in time, the Lindenwald Fire Department in New Jersey that sold the vehicle, that did not take the decals off of the vehicle, which is ludicrous to me, but they didn't remove the decals on the vehicle, they are also talking to an attorney. So everybody is fighting back on everything. You have freedom of speech, but you are not free from the repercussions that that speech causes. When it's racist, when it's bigoted, you harm people, and that's what I have a problem with. I'm asking council and all other city entities to investigate this vehicle, as we do have a contract with a unknown fire department company for $360,000 for a new fire truck that was agreed upon on April 15th of this year. We need to hold any company, any company we deal with to a higher standard as this does reflect back on our city. At present time, the note decals, as far as that goes, it's now up for sale on Fenton Fire, because it's become a big liability for the one known company and the unknown company. Residents deserve to know where our tax dollars go. Whoever owns this vehicle should be potentially not to benefit from our tax funds due to the racially charged speech that was shouted from the truck. Thank you.
That's time. Thank you. All right, so that's going to conclude this segment of audience communication. We are going to go back at the end, so if you haven't had a chance, you'll have your chance then. I'm going to now open it up to council, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate it. There was a comment about one of the administrative staff using their phone. Well, they're not council members, so if they're using their phone, they're doing a number of things. They can be responding to emails throughout the day. Most of our department heads and staff have been here since 8 o'clock in the morning, and they come to council meetings after. I'll fire off emails to departmental staff, ask them questions throughout the meeting, clarifying questions, there's a whole host of things, but there's seven council members, and the people on the end are administrative staff, so if they're using their phone, they're allowed to use their phone. I am supportive of a deer call. It's something that I think that we should have done years ago. It is not a Livonia issue, it's a regional issue. A few years ago, when we had Chairman Kathleen McIntyre was on city council, she chaired a meeting in 2023 maybe about studying deer in Livonia, we joined the Deer Coalition, and since then, to your point, to that gentleman, we've had a lot of meetings and discussion, but not a lot of action. It's a, it's a political hot button. 50% of the people want you to do something, the other 50% of people don't want you to do something. I happen to be one of the people that thinks deer have become an invasive species in southeastern Michigan. We had a representative from Eagle, or not Eagle, excuse me, DNR come out and give us a really great presentation on deer in metro Detroit. It's a perfect environment for them to flourish. They have no natural predator, some coyotes out there, but in reality, there's not a lot of natural predators other than vehicles. They have an abundant amount of food and water, and then they have a ton of area to bed down. So naturally, they reproduce at extreme levels, and that is why metro Detroit is dealing with such a large species of deer. So we had a really great presentation from them, but ultimately, the city council needs four votes, and a mayor that is supportive of going out to contract a company through DNR, through, through other federal resources and whatnot, and I don't know that there's four votes to do that. So just plainly, I don't know that there's four council members and potentially five council members to veto the mayor if the administration isn't supportive of that measure to go out and start that process to do that. But even then, so, it's not something you just do over one year. The DNR representative explained to us that the deer somehow know that they're being herd, the herd is being thinned, they know this, and they reproduce even quicker. And it was really interesting presentation. I know more about deer than I ever knew, and it's something that Farmington Hills, I think they're going out for a deer call. Southfield is investigating things, and you're seeing a lot of communities in southern Oakland County and western Wayne County discussing it, but again, it's a politically hot button issue that some councils do want to do stuff and others don't. So I hope we do, but I guess we'll see. And then also the millage, that is coming up, the vote August 5th. As we know, our next council meeting will be August 11th. I will not be here for that meeting, just a heads up, I guess, out there. We're taking my dad on vacation, so I'm looking forward to that. But right now, there's some 20, some thousand, 26,000 maybe absentee ballots out there. Don't quote me on that, clerk, but there's a lot of absentee ballots out there, and trust me, it sounds like she's got a nice presentation for us. I've heard five or 6,000 maybe have been turned in, so tons of ballots out there, and I hope the voters get out there and turn their ballots in. I don't like no reason absentee voting. I think that people should show up on Election Day and vote, but we've got a lot of ballots out there, and hopefully people turn those in between now and Election Day. People are allowed to have their voices heard, and I hope the public gets out there, whether they're supportive of the millage initiative or not supportive of it. I just hope that people vote in local elections. I think typically speaking, we have about, we haven't had a primary in a number of years, I think since 2019. I can't remember how many voted in that primary, but the last few elections we've had, we've had 25,000 or so, give or take, vote in city elections, and I hope that number is, is close to that, because there's enough ballots out there. So looking forward to this, this primary, and that's it. Thanks, Mr. President, appreciate it.
I got the vice president, I got Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things that just came up during audience communication. As far as the deer, to piggyback just a little bit on what Mr. Donovan was talking about, I do know that Farmington and Southfield are going to be attempting a cull into 2026. The issue is that the USDA has currently got a hiring freeze. We did receive a letter from our Director of Governmental Affairs regarding that, and that limits their capacity as far as expanding culling programs. So as a result, probably the earliest we're going to be able to deal with them would be the winter of '26 into '27. So that's kind of where we're at as far as being in the queue, as far as supporting a call. You know, it hurts my heart to think about going out and killing the deer, but if we can do this humanely and process the meat and donate it to shelters, then I would also be on board with that because they have caused a lot of destruction and safety issues within our city. So that is, that is an issue that we're going to have to deal with. Another audience member brought up that the city needs to have an independent auditor look at our finances. We do have an independent- We do have an independent auditor look at our finances. In fact, it's demanded by the charter, and we just had ours done. In fact, it was reported out at, I think, two council meetings ago. I am the Chair of Finance and Budget, and I did report that out, that committee meeting that is held in Finance and Budget, usually around the end of May every year, end of May, early June, and so that is when we had that done. The results of that audit were that we are a top-notch city and very fiscally responsible, so just kind of know that. The one thing I did want to address, yes, in case you didn't know, we do have a primary August fifth coming up. The teacher in media just says, do your homework. You know, there's a lot of misinformation floating out there on both sides of the millage issue, on different candidates, there's a lot of rhetoric out there. Just because it's on social media doesn't necessarily mean it's true, so just please, I implore you to do your homework. I'm not going to tell you how to vote, I'm not going to tell you how I'm voting, but you just really need to do your homework. Now, with all the voting options, I know there's been some pushback about this August vote. Voting is easier than ever. We've really been voting, was it June twenty-fifth, Madam Clerk, about that they?
Yes.
Okay, so from June twenty-fifth to August fifth, you got like six weeks to figure this out, between absentee ballots, it's easy to be on the permanent AV, I know many people who are, there's early voting the weekend prior, and if you're unable to come into City Hall for early voting, that you can call and they'll do curbside, and there's day of at the polls, so you have a lot of options. So frankly, you got a six-week window, and even if you're out of, out of town for those six weeks, overseas, whatever, they'll get you the ballot. They're very good about doing that. So really, I, I just, you know, I just want to remind people, you really don't have an excuse at this point. The other thing, I know it was brought up, that the department heads, you know, cannot, well, if they don't live in Livonia, yeah, they can't vote, if they do live in Livonia, just like anybody. So just, you know, this, this decision is to the residents of the city, not the department heads, not surrounding communities, this is up to the residents to decide on their council candidates and on the millage. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the, the election, I concur with what the Vice President said. You can hear just now, twenty-one, what, twenty-one thousand, Madam Clerk, still out?
We sent out twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty absentee ballots. Of those, we have received back six thousand, five hundred and forty-five. So our current return rate is at twenty-four point five eight percent, which is about eight, uh, six percent higher than a typical turnout already for absentee.
If I may ask you, on a election, even a general election, how many voters do we usually get in Livonia? It's under thirty thousand, it's not?
Yes, it's typical turnout's nineteen to twenty-one percent.
Okay, so just a point well taken, lot of early voting to go on there, as the clerk and her team has opened up City Hall doors and met curbside for this election as well, which quite frankly, they didn't have to do, because it's only done in even years, if I'm correct on that law.
Early voting's required in the even years, curbside voting's always required.
Always required, yeah, but I meant, you don't have to have open.
We do not have to have early voting at all.
Right, not in an odd year, right. Okay, so enough of the voting, just go vote, that's the main thing, right? Or turn in your ballots if you still have them out. And you want to do that by the fifth, right, if not before?
Yes.
Yep, okay. I just, I just want to, on a lighter note, you know, we have these dogs that we have on the police department, and one is named Colt, and for years, he's, you know, been servicing the police department. You know him, don't you, Scott? Probably. Scott doesn't want to admit those things, I guess. And, and with unwavering commitment, if any of you are on social media, which I'm sure many of you aren't, no, there are many tailwags and treats, it's his birthday. So we want to wish Colt a happy birthday, and I know that's pretty lame, but I, I'm impressed with that, with Colt, that, you know, these dogs do tireless work. I used to have Dutch Shepherds that were trained to do police work, and it's amazing what they can do. I also want to give a shout out to my store, which I always, I don't usually do, but I got to do it in this instant, because we just got a big award for Metropolitan Detroit being the number one florist in Metropolitan Detroit. So I'm pretty proud of that, and I'm pretty proud that we're in Livonia and we've represented them for forty-some years. So thank you very much to everyone, and as far as the deer population goes, the DNR had fabulous comments about the deer and what we can do, and not even went over sterilization of the deer, which some people believe in. I, I don't know that much about it, but I'm just, there's, there's a lot of considerations as we look at these deer, and I empathize with people that are getting their yards destroyed, et cetera. Ironically, I look out my door, I, I live on a, a large piece of property in Livonia, and I see my little fourteen-pound dog running back and forth to the fence, and him and the deer on the other side of the fence are playing back and forth. So if you ask Eddie, he's all in favor of the deer, so I just, you know, I'm joking around, obviously, but it is, it is an issue in, all over the place. So thank you very much, colleagues and audience, for your endurance.
Councilwoman Budzinski.
So I just have events to share, per usual. The first one is actually inspired by Ian Egger, who works at Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop, who suggested that I have a coffee hour there. And one of the issues that a lot of residents bring often, and one that I feel strongly about, is development in the northeast corner of our city. I know we talk a lot about south Livonia, but we don't talk a lot about what's happening in northeast Livonia. So I'm hosting a coffee hour in the community at Anastasia and Katie's Coffee on Saturday, August ninth, at ten AM. It's going to be more of a listening session to hear what residents want to see happening in their neighborhood, and so then we can toy around with, you know, what are some action items that we can take from that meeting. I'll also have my regular coffee hour at the library that following weekend, Saturday, August sixteenth, at eleven o'clock at the library, and we'll just talk about Livonia or whatever folks want to talk about. On August eighteenth is the Economic Development and Strategic Planning Committee meeting on the Noble Building, where we'll be talking about what does the future look like for that site, and how can we make it a community center, is what I am working very hard to see happen with that building. I know Sandberg was also mentioned, I personally also love Sandberg, I think it's a great library, and helped organize a Japanese Storytime that's going to take place there on August twentieth, so if you have littles in your life, come learn about Japanese culture. And then just some other fun things that are happening in our community, I think we can use a little joy, is Shakespeare in the Park, A Comedy of Errors, is at Veterans Park, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's the second and final weekend put on by Livonia Community Theater. And then it's also the Big Picnic at Greenmead, from one to three on Saturday, and then there's live music and yard games, live animals, face paintings, tours of the building. It's always a really just nice, good time, a, a great way to appreciate one of Livonia's many assets.
Thank you. Anything else from council? All right, so I just have a couple items I want to touch base on. Council announcements, Finance and Budget Committee, Committee meeting will take place before the next council meeting on August eleventh at six PM. It's going to be right here. I do have a note that says item twenty-one will be reported at the August eleventh regular, so FYI, I will touch base when we get to that item. And also, I have new data on item twenty-eight. And then just to touch base, I want to address exactly more, maybe a little bit more information that hasn't been said about the deer population. So after we walked your beautiful yard, looked at the hostas, I, we shared the same stuff. I'm having the same problem, like we kind of joked about blocks down by the airports, just loving the deer population, because they keep on dropping the price on hostas, it seems, from three to ten dollars every time, but what kind of steamrolled at that point is we did have a resolution to the administration asking for different options. The city did also join the Urban Deer Coalition, and I'll be completely honest that when, I know Councilman Morgan was, was a huge, he spearheaded a lot into that, into that committee. There's a lot of talk, a lot of less action. I agree exactly what you said, I don't disagree with you at all. We were looking at potentially trailblazing, and we've been waiting on a response from the administration, a formal response. And if you look at the item under the reports from the mayor and other city officials, Administrative Response to CR three-three-seven dash two-four, which puts it in the year two thousand and twenty-four, this comes to us from the Office and the Mayor and Governmental Affairs for Controlling the Urban Deer Population. We have received word that that has yet been tabled again. So I don't want to be a deterrent and say, but our powers are limited, we can enforce things, we ask the administration, and I will tell you that I do apologize that it's taken this long, but I know this council will keep pushing that to ensure we have some kind of a solution. I will say, Councilman Donovan did bring up a great point, and this goes to the Doge. The Doge kind of wiped out a lot of the people that would facilitate this call, so more to come, we have not forgot about it. I, being completely honest, I like, I, I didn't, when I seen you come up, I'm going, I wish I had more information, we're still working on it. So I'll keep in touch, I've got your email, I've got your contact information, I appreciate you coming here. There just, I wish I had more to report on, but I will, I will keep in touch with you. So with that, on a happy note, because I was missed the last meeting, I want to wish my daughter Harper, Harps, probably ninety percent of this room knows, celebrated her eleventh birthday, and she paired that with making the boys travel hockey teams. So I don't know if I'm happy or nervous at the same time, but she does lead the team in penalty minutes, which is good. Wonder where she gets that from. So, she leads the team in penalty minutes with the boys, so.
Oh, no.
Figure that out, hey, watch out, boys. So with that, I'm going to jump back in to reports from the mayor and other city officials, and I will start by saying that item A, is the administrative response to the deer population, has been tabled to the next meeting, possibly after, but we'll, we'll stay on top of that. We also do have, and I, and I'm, you know, Carter, please tell me if I'm wrong on this, and these are more of receiving files. We do have items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J, that are basically, I'm going to kind of just, I'm going to read one, and I'm going to tell you who it's from. B is a communication with the Department of Finance dated from June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, forwarding the departmental purchases report for the month's ending in April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Chair?
Yes.
It is actually not the departmental purchase.
No, exactly, I was going to, I was going to clarify that as I was, as I was going. So B is the finance. Now C through J are going to be more of communication received from the Office of the City Clerk, dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, forwarding the two thousand and twenty-five tax rate request, Form L dash four-zero-two-nine, from the Charter County of Wayne, Michigan, regarding the collection of the district taxes. D is the same tax request form, but this is going to be from Clarenceville School District. E is going to be from Livonia Public Schools. F is from Oakland Schools, ISD. G is the Plymouth Road Development Authority. H is Schoolcraft College. I is the State of Michigan. And J is Wayne County Regional Education Service Agency, RISA. Wow, that's, I finally learned that acronym, right there. We all learn something new. So that is just receiving file. Appreciate our Office of the Clerk and Finance for getting that together. Now with that, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, where items one through fifteen on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on July seventh, and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have direction?
So moved.
Support.
I have motion by Toy, support by Vice President. Counsel, do we have any comments, concerns, issues? Anything from the audience on the consent? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shield?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the consent agenda passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to unfinished business, which is meetings of the committees, starting with item sixteen, is a committee of the whole meeting of April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The subject matter was petition two-zero-two-five dash zero-one dash zero-two dash zero-one, submitted by Eman Enterprises LLC, requesting waiver use approval to redevelop an existing commercial site, including service bays, renovating the interior and exterior of the building, and operating an automobile repair facility at two-seven-eight-one-nine Plymouth Road, located at the southwest corner of Plymouth and Cardwell Streets in Section thirty-four. Let me touch base on that one, see. This one is, so the meeting commenced at six oh four, these notes are going to be pretty quick, I know Councilman Donovan is so much there, I am usually the opposite, that's why I apologize, kudos to him. So the meeting commenced at six oh four PM. The Council President introduced the item. Councilmember Donovan offered an approving motion with a stipulation to include brick, screening, and landscaping. Just to give you more of a high, high-level view on this, we did have a petitioner, and we always like to work with our petitioners, especially in the site plan process, that if we need to take an extra step, we would open it into committee of a whole, we were able to do that for this petitioner, and we were able to kind of look a little bit more in-depth at different various ideas. It shows here that the committee recommends the Law Department to draft an approving resolution with the above-mentioned additions, and the committee meeting adjourned at six thirty. The note that this item will be out of committee.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving, support.
Would you like to?
Mr. President, you did a good job, kind of highlighting that meeting, the petitioners here this evening, and they are going to be operating new business out of one of our vacant businesses on Plymouth Road in Angster area, and it'd be nice to see that, those updates done, and great job to the planning department, working through some of the things that are important to the council. Thank you, sir.
This is the old Mickey Shore, right?
Yep.
So this is going to, I know we had a, a comment from the audience that brought up, so this is a good enhancement, and kudos to the developer. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? I will say that you have an approving motion, so you're, I would recommend just hanging out right there. We don't have any audience communication?
Never seen anything.
Yes, so, listen, I've attended enough of these. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shield?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Now you can celebrate. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, good luck renovating that building, and thank you for choosing that spot.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item seventeen, is a committee of a whole that was held on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The subject matter of investigation into city departments and their procedures as it relates to the city charter. This one was also a fairly fast meeting, kind of giving you some context behind it, we did have some questions that were brought up, a list of items that we were looking for answers. Our city clerk was given those questions, and we did have a quick meeting. The meeting right here was commenced at six oh nine PM. The Council President introduced the item, council members posed various questions, referenced from list provided by city council. The city clerk was able to address and provide insights on most inquiries. The committee meeting adjourned at six seventeen PM. The committee does recommend that this stay in committee, and with that, I will open it up to council, but there is nothing, there were no any, there were no resolutions, it was just more of getting the questions answered. So council, any, anything to talk about? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? All right, so again, that one's going to stay in committee. And then, we also have, item eighteen is a committee of the whole meeting that was held on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The subject matter of the Noble Library and Sheldon Park issues. Members of, I know, committee members that were there, this one was, the committee meeting commenced at six oh one PM, we were upstairs, this was prior to one of the meetings. Council President introduced the item, providing insight of an updated building condition assessment and revised opinion from the administration. That followed discussion and comments from all council members. This item will remain in the committee for further consideration, and the committee does recommend that this stay in committee. The meeting adjourned at six forty-five PM. Again, this was, as some people alluded to during audience communication, the findings and more of an detailed response and review of those findings and the administration's goals going forward. Counsel, anything to add to this? Audience? Okay, and you get two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Deb Christensen again, Livonia resident. I'm actually going to finish speaking for my good friend and Save Alfred Noble buddy, Cindy Fleming. So we have Save Alfred Noble, we're originally pleased to see that the mayor had sent council in early February, or this year, a letter saying that she intended to stabilize the exterior, provide some kind of interior ventilation, secure the building from vandals, break-ins, and natural disasters, and provide regular surveillance and monitoring, that's in quotations. The mayor's letter went on to say that it was time to advance community-led strategic The mayor's letter went on to say that it was time to advance community-led strategic planning to determine the future use of Noble Site. As you all know by now, from the repeated large group, the repeated large groups of citizens who have, excuse me, come before you to fight this noble cause, the nonprofit Save Alfred Noble has already engaged in several years of community engagement to discuss possible creative reuse of this building. We have found that the mayor's letter so far to be disingenuous, not only because no efforts have taken place to prevent further destruction to the building, but the mayor has declined to send us a copy of the same letter to our nonprofit until after the upcoming April 18th committee meeting. Valuable time has been wasted. Since early February, since early February, we could have been writing grants and begin to fundraise for the preservation and restoration of the building in earnest. We could have all been moving forward in a united manner to save Alfred Noble. Instead, we are once again starting all over. I implore you to finally listen to the hundreds, if not thousands, of residents and more, and more recently, quite a few city council candidates who want to save Alfred Noble. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask, do we have any other buildings or, I don't know, I know libraries know, but that have to raise their own dollars in order to stay open or in order to be valuable to the city? Or I don't know how to phrase it. I find this a little bit unusual. Not that I'm going to, you know, I don't have enough information on it. I have a lot of information, but not enough to make a qualified big decision or big proclamation or direction. But it troubles me to think that we're trying to put the onus on some of these residents to come up with dollars when it's our responsibility as a city to, you know, watch our buildings. I mean, that's part of what we're supposed to do, the health and safety and welfare of not only our citizens, but, you know, what is in the interior of our buildings. That property is definitely ours, and, you know, we're going to invest a lot of money into that park. We've already approved the bond, and that's coming back to us in September. So it behooves us to take a look at this area as it encompasses. It backs up to retail. It has a lot of open area. It has a city building on it, and it has a lot of city properties. So as we look at it, I would hope that all of us, you know, take time to, and I know many of us have, don't get me wrong, to go over and look at it and not make it a political football, because it doesn't deserve that. It really doesn't. That's why, no offense, I made that motion to say either tear it down or use it or do something with it, because it's been three and a half years, and we're still on the same thing. And I know it takes time sometimes, but, you know, I think, I think we owe that to our residents, that area. I'm on Plymouth Road, and as I look at people that are looking at my buildings and things, I tell them, I say, this is going to be a great improvement to this, and you write down there, and it helps me look at the sale of my properties and things on Plymouth Road. And so I clap for that, don't get me wrong. But I think we got to embrace this whole kind of concept, I guess, is where I was coming from. Sorry to go off.
Yeah, no, no, no. My personal, just to touch base on that, Councilman Toy is, I hope we need to get back to ensuring that the 36 square miles have an equal look at blight and enhancement, while the 5 and Farmington area and Noble and all that area, we have a lot of broken windows, and I won't digress into that. But I do appreciate those comments. With that, I'm going to go back to the podium. You got two minutes.
Laura Johnick out on Under Street. I just got a quick question. We talked about sump pump. I haven't heard that addressed. I haven't heard, it clearly needs a sump pump. Can you, can anybody answer that, or do I have to walk away?
No, I can tell you that I was finally able, thanks to Carter Fisher and our DPW director, that through waiver process, I will finally be able to get into the building to take a look. Obviously, I had to prove, I have to show licenses, you know, I have my LED Renovators license. I have, I have all my EPA licenses, so I want to go take a peek and see what's really going on. So hopefully, I'll have an answer for you within the next week or so. But I know that with the report coming back, that the building foundation is, is fine. I think that you've, a lot of people have said that there's been many workers and people out there. So I do think that the ball is rolling a little bit. I know that there has been some attempts to look at the electrical. The problem is, is it's been neglected so much that to, right now, even the electrical panel is completely flooded, and it's a hazard. So until that can be taken care of, I think that's the next step, is getting some kind of a construction power, where you would go and just have a meter right there with a couple outlets and stuff, and that might be the solution just to keep it moving. That's the hope, because if not, it's just going to keep being an in-ground pool. So.
Are you saying some kind of a solar or some kind of a generator run?
So a lot of times, when, if you ever see a construction site, they'll have basically, you know, a couple stanchions with a meter on it. It's just a construction meter that would give an outlet that could be run temporarily to a sump pump until that electrical panel can be in such a position that it's not going to shock anybody, literally.
Yeah.
So that's coming soon. I'll keep you posted with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Cindy Fleming again. Since Sheldon Park is in on this line item, I'd like to say again, thank you to Ted Davis for coming out, I believe it was in February of this year, to Rosedale Presbyterian Church to meet with a group of approximately 60 residents to discuss the site plan for Sheldon Park. And we gave him a lot of valuable feedback, and I understand that some slight changes might have been made, but I want to, once again, publicly state, as somebody who actually put in five playgrounds prior and has an early childhood and family's degree, that I would be more than happy to serve as a community partner on this and provide some feedback with the Sheldon site plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Real quick, since we're talking about Noble specifically, but there was some Sheldon Park comments on it. On a positive note, I think the next meeting, I see some representatives from Bill Brown Ford and Mr. Penske. They donated $100,000 to Sheldon Park Improvement, so I just wanted to give them a shout. I saw some of the representatives here earlier. They're in an agenda item later on, but Bill Brown Ford wanted to get involved in our community with Penske's acquisition of Bill Brown Ford, and they wanted to support, so they donated, contributed $100,000 to the Sheldon Park Improvements. So thanks, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? I don't see any. I'm going to move on. I do want to note that item 19, the Capitol Avenue and Infrastructure Committee meeting, we have that has been tabled until the next meeting due to timing and restrictions with our agenda. So that will be reported out at that time at the meeting. I don't think we had any resolutions. It was more of just more presentations on where everything is, so. Moving on to the unfinished business, item 20 is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Sections 110, 120, and 220 of Title IX Animals, which is chapter one in order to regulate the keeping of racing pigeons.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll offer first reading.
We have a first read. Any other comments from council?
Just to clarify, just to clarify quickly, the agenda item actually lists the wrong sections of the title and chapter to be amended. Those were the sections for our dog license. We're actually amending Section 40, which is definitions, and adding Sections 540, 550, and 560, all of which deal directly with racing pigeons, the keeping of racing pigeons, and laws.
With your smart lawyer talk on the record, I'm going to say if we can acknowledge that, and the maker of the first read, Councilwoman Scheel, are you good with that?
I am good with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I will touch base that we did learn about racing pigeons a few meetings ago, which was intriguing. We did have a resident that had a surrounding neighbor that had, I think, over 25, so we learned. And this, this is a good motion. I appreciate the resident for bringing it forward. Is there any comments from the audience on racing pigeons? All right, seeing none. Item 21, this was also when I was doing the report out. This is being tabled until the next meeting. So I am jumping right into item 22. It's a roll call vote. It's a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us again from the Department of Law to amend Sections 100 of Title IX, Chapter 56, to modernize language used in the malicious use of telephone ordinance. A first reading was given by Councilmember Linda Scheel on July 7th.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a second reading and offer the motion for the vote.
Perfect. We have a second read, council?
Support.
Audience, do we have any comments, concerns, questions? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item 22 carries seven to zero. I just want to give just a quick overview on these next, that, that item that we just voted on, the next two. So we have our, our court that was kind of doing some, I guess, going through and looking to do some more preventative ordinances with different things that they've been seeing. So kudos to the court for bringing this forward to be, I guess, more transparent and be up with the better rules. So we're going to move on to item 23, is another roll call. It's a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Chapter 88 of Title IX, which is a sale of tobacco products to persons under the age of 21, to mirror the penalties of the state statute and tailor the language of an ordinance to prohibit the use of a nicotine vape in school buildings. A first reading was given by Councilwoman Carrie Bozinski on July 7th.
Would you like to offer a second read and vote?
All right, we have a second read. Any comments? Yep. Any comments from the council? And we have the audience, two minutes.
Deb Christensen again, Livonia resident. I got up last city council meeting. I, I'm in favor of this. The part that I'm concerned about is that here we're looking at ordinances, and we're updating ordinances, and we need to update another one, and that is a nondiscrimination ordinance. And so honestly, I'm glad that we're going to be having a change of city council members, so maybe this, this council and this city can finally get with the times and do what the state of Michigan is doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to item 24, is a roll call. Proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law to add Section 45 of Title IX, Chapter 4, which is obstructing officers in city business, in order to give additional protection to a person that is making an emergency call and to criminalize the act of intervening with emergency services. A first read was given by Councilwoman Laura Toy on July 7th. Councilwoman Toy, would you like?
No, that was great. Second reading.
There we go. We got a second read?
Support.
We got support. Any comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item 24 carries seven to zero. We're moving on to item 25, is a block party request, comes to us from Jim Runrow, to be held Friday, August 8th, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Brentwood Street between Jacklin Drive and Meadowlark Street, with a rain date of Saturday, August 9th, 2025. Is the petitioner here?
So moved.
Oh, yes. Perfect. Do I, so we have?
Support.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for showing up. Tell us a little bit.
Seems trivial after all this other stuff that's been going on.
No, this is the most important thing right here, sir. No. No, a block party is, is always a good time. Tell us a little bit about what you got going on.
Ah, same as the last 22 years we've been doing it.
I love it. Well, you got the tigies on right now. Any comments or questions from council? Anything?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. 22 years is not easy to keep the neighborhood going after all these years. It's pretty awesome. We love block parties. It's always a good positive thing, and a lot of neighborhoods across the city do that, so it's nice to see you keep on doing. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got a website now, and people from the neighborhood, blocks around the block, they all participate, so it's pretty good. I want to give a shout out to the Girl Scouts who are doing a great job with recycling. It's learned about it when my kids were in school, and now I'm pulling plastic cups out of the garbage can, rinsing them out, and throwing them in the recycle bin that they're doing.
You picked a good meeting to be educated on a lot of things that happen in the city.
And I plan on looking at their website, because I'm sure I'm doing something wrong.
No, that's so cool. No, right now, we have an approving motion. Anything else from the audience on this block party? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the block party carries seven to zero. You're all good, sir. Thanks for hanging out with us. We'll see you next year.
All right.
All right, moving on. Item 26 is a block party request, comes to us from Christina Ziole, to be held Saturday, August 9th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Summer Street between Riverside Drive and Ashurst Street. Hello?
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Yes.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Usually we get these in the study, so I appreciate my colleague right here. Tell us a little about what you got going on.
We're going to do a luau style this year. We're going to have hula dancers, and we're going to have a bounce house for the kids, games, just to get the neighborhood together.
It's coming up soon. I can't believe we're almost to August.
I know.
Mr. President, can I volunteer Councilman Scott Morgan to do the hula dance at your block party?
Not happening. He's, I, I heard you were the champion back in the day, man.
That's what I heard.
Come out of retirement for the people. With that, any questions, comments, concerns from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the block party passes seven to zero. You might see Councilman Morgan, so don't be surprised.
Thank you.
That's what he looks like.
He's a very happy guy.
He is very happy.
All right, so we're on to item 27, is a block party, comes to us from Tracy Nolte, to be held Saturday, September 6th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Marie Street and Court, between Nelson Street and Minton Avenue, with a rain date Saturday, September 13th, 2025. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
We got support.
Can I ask her a question?
You take it.
Um, how long have you been doing this one? Because it's been a while.
Yeah, it has been a while. I'm actually Adina Chuddy. I'm a neighbor that works with Tracy. She couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to join. We've lived in the neighborhood for 10 years, and it's been happening for the last 10 years at least, and I'm sure many years before, so we're happy to have it again.
Listen, Tracy's seen the agenda. She says, hey, I'm busy today.
Yeah. I think she did, yeah.
So she owes you.
On the incoming, but it was a good meeting, so I'm glad I came.
She owes you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Are you having hula dancing?
No hula dancing. I mean, maybe, maybe the kids might.
All right. Anything else from the audience? All right, let's get a vote going. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan? Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And you got seven votes. Enjoy.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item 28 is a site plan petition, comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-05-08-06, submitted by Rich Nauman, requesting a site plan approval to construct a 4,164 square foot warehouse garage at the 6th Mid Plaza at 29441 Six Mile Road located in Section 4.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
All right. Now, do we have, now forgive me, I wasn't at the last meeting. Do we review this at all, Mr.? Okay, so we're already good. The petitioner, appreciate you being here. You do have an approving. Do we have council, any questions for the petitioner?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll just note there is some new data added for this item, answering some of our questions at the last meeting.
Okay, very cool. And so you guys are all good. All right. Audience is good. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Thanks for joining us. Thank you.
You too.
You too.
All right, moving on to new business, item 29. We do have another block party request. This comes to us from Wafa De Naro, to be held Saturday, August 2, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Huff Street between Lady Wood and Kingsbury Streets with a rain date of Sunday, August 3, 2025. Council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think, if my memory serves me correctly, this has been dubbed before and I, I don't see her coming or any representative thereof.
Do we have the petitioner here at all?
I'll support.
Okay, council's pleasure is, but I would offer the approving.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, typically speaking, the petitioners have to be here. You can't ask for somebody for not here. However, this has been ongoing for a long time and I know the Wafa De Naro family, they do a lot in the community. So I'm assuming there's some sort of miscommunication. Thank you.
Yes. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item 29 carries seven to zero. We're jumping into item 30 is a request to adopt a resolution as requested by Wayne County. This comes to us from the Engineering Division, agreeing to the conditions under which the water main replacement project on Schoolcraft and Merriman Roads are to be completed. Council, need a motion?
Support. Approving, sorry. I'll support.
Boom. Mr. Zalinski, do you just want to just give a, like a 10-hour overview of this, please?
Quick and dirty. All we're trying to do is get the Wayne County permit approved so that way we can go ahead and fix the water main at Merriman and Schoolcraft. Thank you.
There you go. Anything from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. I'm going to go back to council for items that are not on the agenda. If you've already spoke, you've got to wait till the study.
Anybody would like to speak? Seeing none. I'm going to go back to council. Oh, yes. Yeah, so, yes, Gillian, you, the next meeting and during the study, you can, it frees it up. So just right after this. Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, half hour ago.
Take a break and then they.
Yes. The floor is yours. Name and address.
Denise Micah, Micahshire, Livonia. I want to have a good news story for you is that I went to Newburg Village and they are finally, after eight years and three times marking the sidewalks, that there's progress there. So thank you. And I'm sorry I had to come and bring that to your attention, but as we have elected all of you, that we hope that you're representing the citizens. I do want to make a comment on what Jim had said about an independent auditor. We had attended the audit review and the auditor on record was Plant Moran, which is the same company, different division, that has done a lot of work with the city. And so that's why he used the word independent. Didn't feel that way. And one of the findings for that audit was that the mayor had spent money ahead of getting approval for the senior center. I think it was about $65,000. And so it wasn't covered by the grant and so therefore it had to come out of the city budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. Thank you. Vicki Johnson, Jamison Court. Just have a couple of questions and it's regarding St. Rafka, hullabaloo that's going to be coming up very shortly. And so they, I'm concerned about the amount of noise pollution that comes from that that I can hear more than a half a mile away. And I think, so I got some information from the vice president about that it was going to be monitored. So my question is, who's going to monitor it? Probably the ordinance department. Do they work at night? Do they work on the weekend?
The police, actually. The police department actually has decibel meters.
They have decibel meters and, and they, they're going to come to my house and they're...
What they usually do is they'll be on the, the perimeter to see how the noise would go. A lot of the times, the bass is the issue and the bass doesn't pick up really well on decibels.
It's not just the music.
Yeah, it's people. It's everything that travels.
They're yakking on their loudspeakers. They can just, in my opinion, the people right there who are there need to hear it, not half a mile away.
No, what they'll do, they'll be right on, on the perimeter of the property lines with the decibel meters. And that should because basically there's, there's coefficients that the decibels will dwindle every so many feet. So there is some science behind it and, you know, they've got the cool toys that will do it. I mean, we've, when we had that at St. Mary's, it's been very productive with the, the partnership between the church, the fair and council. Over, I would say the last three years, it's gotten better each year. So we're hoping that this does the same thing.
Midnight, you're still, you're still listening to this at midnight.
But no, I mean, honestly, at this point.
The windows are shaking.
My advice to you is if you have an issue, you call the police department and we'll make sure that we note it. It's best we can do right now.
Yeah, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.